First up is roll call, Darcy. I presume you'll take care of that for us?
Commissioner Stevens? I'm sorry?
Nothing.
I'm here, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Lopes?
Here.
Commissioner Founds?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Commissioner Cantonwine?
Good evening, I'm here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
And we do not have Commissioner Satter tonight.
She's not attending, or she just hasn't called in?
I... I don't have her in the meeting, and I didn't hear that she would be absent.
Okay, we don't know, okay. Just curious, alright. So, at this point, is it opportunity for public comment? But, on any issues of concern to the Planning Commission, however it's not about what the agenda item is for tonight, we will be opportunity for public to testify about that when we get into the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to share something with the Commissioner? I guess not. Okay. So, we will then start the, the public hearing. So I have some stuff I need to, to read through for everyone's benefit, so bear with me as I, I go through this. The public hearing is now open for the consideration of file numbers an application by Mary Rumba for a comprehensive plan amendment and corresponding zone change for approximately 6.63 acre property from 2.33 acres of high-density residential and 4.3 acres of public and community open space slash open space management to 5.4 acres of general commercial and 1.15 acres of public and community open space slash open space management. The amendment is proposed to allow for future development of a park and recovery center campus, including a substance abuse disorder treatment facility, medical offices, housing, and other related uses. No development is proposed with this application. Assistants in the hearing tonight are several members of the county staff, Principal Planner Martha Fritzi, Senior Planner Taylor Campy, Plan Director Jennifer Hughes, and Administrative Specialist Darcy Reinhardt. This public hearing is being conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the Planning Commission and county staff, have both audio and video capability. The applicant will be added as a panelist during their presentation. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see the panelist's name on their screen, but will, will be able to hear them when they speak. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' videos will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county's website as soon as possible. So, a few general statements about the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision on this matter. The Board will conduct another hearing on this application on October 14th, 2025, at 11:00 AM. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started, a new and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10:00 PM unless the majority of the Planning Commission, Commissioners in attendance vote to continue past that time. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing will be continued for other reasons as well. I should say maybe continued for other reasons as well. If an agreement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be made the only notice given of that additional hearing. So this is the, how we will be conducting the hearing. So it will be conducted as follows. First, we're going to hear a staff report from the Planning and Zoning Division. Then, if there's any additional correspondence received, we'll enter that into the record. Any technical information from other government agencies. Then we'll listen to testimony by the applicant or the representative. Maximum length of 60 minutes. Then, we allow testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. Maximum length 10 minutes per CPO or hamlet. Then we'll hear testimony by proponents of the application. Maximum length 3 minutes per speaker. Or, I may let you go a little longer, depending on how much there is, if you, if you have some, you need the time. Similarly, testimony by opponents of the application, maximum length 3 minutes per speaker. Testimony by persons who are neutral on the application, again, maximum 3 minutes per speaker. Then there'll be an opportunity for the applicant's rebuttal, which is limited to arguments addressing evidence already in the record, maximum length 30 minutes. Then there's an opportunity for the Planning and Zoning Division staff's rebuttal, which is limited to addressing evidence already in the record. Then we'll close the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission will have a discussion and take action. The, there is a designated time during the hearing when it will be open for testimony. The Chair will make clear, clear when this is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the raise hand feature in Zoom. Attendees on a PC or iPad, you have a raise hand button on the Zoom bar, top or bottom, depending on your device, on your device. Attentive attendees by phone can use the star 9 to activate the raise hand feature. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see all participants' cameras, not just the one who's speaking. Staff will call upon you when it's time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please begin by stating your name and where you are from and whom you are representing. If you would like a copy of the final Board of County Commissioners' decision on this matter, please provide your mailing address. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will be returned to normal. Now is the time set for the public hearing related to the previously identified comprehensive plan amendment and zone change application. This is a quasi-deductional land use hearing, which means two important things for those participating in this hearing. First, all of the criteria that the Planning Commission can use in reaching a recommendation are listed in the notice given for this public hearing and will be identified when the oral staff report is presented. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan Zoning and Development Ordinance or other land use regulation that the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Accordingly, anyone testifying is asked, please to direct your testimony to the relevant approved approval criteria. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to this issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to the issue recludes an action for damages in civil court. Once final, the county's decision may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Okay, at this time, I will ask members of the Planning Commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. If anyone wishes to challenge the impartiality of any Commissioner, please clearly indicate your intention to do so in any written oral testimony you may provide. Anyone? No, everyone's good. Okay. So, we can now proceed with the staff report. So Martha, it's all yours.
Thanks Chair, I'm gonna share a presentation that I always claim is short and whatever it is, but I'll do my best. I try. These things are complicated, though. What the heck? Okay. Can you see that in presentation mode, or do you see the things on the side?
Looks good.
Okay, excellent. So... I'm trying to move things around. Okay, well, good evening. I swear I do know how to use Zoom. I, I don't know what's going on. But, we are, thank you, everybody for coming. We are here to talk about a proposed comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change. It's a little complicated because there's actually two zoning districts on, on, on this property in different locations. And so the proposal is to change the plan designation from high-density residential and public and community open space to general commercial and public and community use open space with a, a new configuration of that open space and also a corresponding zone change from high-density residential to, and, and open space management to general commercial and open space management. This hopefully will make sense in just a minute. As was mentioned, this comprehensive plan amendment and zone change would not specifically authorize any development, although it is being requested because of a proposed development that the county would like to build on this property, including a recovery center, campus, and some housing. Any future development on this site would be subject to design review and potentially review related to a small area of habitat conservation area, district on the property. So the subject site itself is about 6.63 acres. It's a single tax lot. It's kind of sandwiched in between I-205, Old 82nd, and Highway 212. It's located on, on the corner of Tolbert and Southeast 92nd. And like I said, it's split zoned, which means that there is an area on this property that is zoned high-density residential, and there is an area that is zoned open space management. And so what that means sort of as a practical matter when we look at zoning and when we think about development is that the physical portion of the property that is zoned HGR is allowed to have any sorts of uses and development that are allowed in the, in the high-density residential zone, whereas the portion of the property, which in this case is, is the majority of the property right now, zoned for open space management, is limited to only those uses and development that are allowed in the OSM zone. And so because of the way that this property is split and because of these particular zones, the proposed recovery center campus would not be able to develop on this site with all of the uses that they want and in all of the locations. And so that's why we are here today to talk about the potential zone change. The site itself is relatively flat. It is the site of the former Clackamas Elementary School, school that was built around 1939. It also includes a fenced area with playgrounds, sport courts, fields, pretty typical old elementary school. And the school itself has not been a public elementary since I think about 2012. There was a charter school in there for a while, but the building itself has largely been either unoccupied or, or certainly underutilized for the last little while. There's a small area of habitat conservation overlay on the northeast corner of the property that in and of itself really doesn't affect the proposal for the zone change. It will potentially require some additional land use permitting when it comes time for development of the site. There are no other known overlays on this site. So, it's in an area with a lot of mixed development and a lot of mixed zoning. There's high-density residential immediately surrounding a few sides of this property. In that area, though, there's a lot of single-family homes, older single-family homes. There's a lot of small multifamily developments. There's a large area of general commercial immediately to the east and northeast and to the south of the property. Again, a lot of really mixed development. There's some older homes in these areas, too. There's a lot of small multifamily, commercial strip malls. It's where the DEQ testing station is. There's just a, a big mix of commercial types of businesses. Some of the older homes in this area have an historic landmark overlay on them. And then once you get out past the commercial and, and high-density residential is a large industrial area. Most of what you would see on here in the purple is zoned business park and light industrial, and it has light industrial-type businesses, but it all connects out to the larger Clackamas industrial area. So the proposal itself, over here on the left, this is sort of the, this is not sort of, it is the existing configuration of the zoning, and the HGR is this sort of orange, sort of backward L-shaped area. The OSM is green, again, that is largely over the playground and playfields and sports courts that were developed for the elementary school. The proposal would sort of flip this a little bit and ha, and retain some OSM up here for the future development of a park, and then the remainder of the site, just under five and a half acres, would be rezoned as general commercial. So, moving along. Notice was sent, as is required, for this proposal and this hearing. It was sent on August 25th. To date, we have only received five comments, which quite frankly surprised me a little bit. But we have only received five comments. Four are in support of the application and just in, in support of the recovery center use generally. One from a local fire district, and then three from members of a good neighbor group that was created by, I believe, the applicants to sort of start a conversation in the community about what was planned for this particular site. The community planning organization in this area is not active. And then the final comment we see was from county engineering staff. We always ask them to review the traffic study, and we'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. So there's lots, of course, there's lots and lots of relevant policies and criteria. They're all outlined in the staff report that you received. They include various statewide planning goals, a number of goals and policies in a number of chapters in the county's comprehensive plan. Because this property is within the metro urban growth boundary, it's also subject to the urban growth management functional plan for metro, although there weren't, aren't really any substantial policies in that urban growth management functional plan that would directly affect this zone change, although a couple are discussed in your staff report. And of course, the county's zoning and development ordinance, Section 1202 specifies the requirements for zone changes. And so I am not going to talk through every single criteria and finding that you'll find in the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any questions about that at the end. I'm gonna really start down in the zoning and development ordinance with zone changes because that sort of wraps up sometimes into the comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals. And so when we look at Section 202 of the zoning and development ordinance, there's really four main criteria for zone changes. The first one is that it is, it is consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And so then we have to look to the comprehensive plan. And in this case, because of the different types of zoning that we're dealing with, there are, there were a lot of, more than the usual number of policies when we talk about zone changes. And so I'm just gonna touch on a few of the more relevant ones. Chapters 2 and 11 really have to do with procedural coordination policies. They've been followed in this case. Chapter 5, which is our transportation system plan, specifically states that a zone change must comply with the transportation planning rule, statewide planning goal 12. The applicant did provide a traffic study that demonstrates compliance with the TPR if the uses are limited. And again, I'll talk about that in just a minute. Chapter 4 is our land use policies, and this is really the chapter that we look to to understand. It's, it's directive to the county in telling us in, under what circumstances and where we can designate certain land use plan designations and zoning. And in this case, because the applicant is asking for general commercial, we look to the general commercial policies. The most relevant one in this case is policy 4.BB.1, which specifies that areas can be designated as general commercial if either the first criterion is met or all of the rest are met. The first one being an historical commitment to commercial use. Clearly, that's not the case here. It's been a school, which is an industrial use, I'm sorry, an institutional use. And so, because that one can't be met, that's fine, but all the rest of them have to be met. And so we look to all of these policies, and they are things like the area is necessary to serve the shopping needs of county residents, which struck me as odd a little bit when I first read it because general commercial allows so many different types of uses. But if you start thinking about shopping sort of less in terms of just for retail goods, it makes a little bit more sense because a lot of the uses that are allowed in general commercial have to do with services. And so, shopping indeed is defined as, as searching for goods or services. And in this case, the services that are proposed to be provided on this site, the applicant has demonstrated are necessary and has demonstrated that this is a good location for them. And so, that criteria was met. And then what the next one is access to at least a major art, road of at least a major arterial classification, which is also interesting because it says access to, it doesn't necessarily need to abut or be adjacent to or take direct access from because it would have said any of those words if that's really what it meant. We saw the location, this road is a block, or this property is a block away from 82nd, which is a minor arterial that provides direct access to a number of roads that are major arterials and/or freeways. And so that can be met. The next criteria talks about not increasing existing commercial strips or creating new commercial strips. Also, to me, a little bit odd, when you start looking up really what is a commercial strip. I think it's pretty uniformly understood to mean what, what in my mind I think of as a strip mall. It's a strip of commercial along a major roadway, highway, or some sort of transportation facility. If you noted on the map, the, the hot pink area that was general commercial, that included a large block of commercial. It's not just simply strip commercial. There is strip commercial along 82nd, but this property and a lot of the surrounding properties are not really part of that. There's just a lot of different uses back in the area. And so I think it's really, it's reasonable to conclude that this property would not be creating commercials, a, a new commercial strip anywhere. And then, it needs to be near employment centers. That's kind of a no-brainer to me in this case. There's a lot of commercial around. It's very close to the Clackamas industrial area. And then it talks about either being able to mitigate or just having minimal adverse impacts such as traffic and noise on adjacent neighborhoods. The applicant has configured the site so that the access would come immediately from the east side, so directly at one block off of 82nd. And so that minimizes traffic through the adjoining neighborhoods, and the north side of the property that would be developed, park would provide a buffer between that, between the proposed development and the neighboring, the neighborhood to the north. And so that can be met as well. And so, in this case, all of the criteria that are required to designate a property general, general commercial have been met by this proposal. Similarly, you know, part of the property is not going to be zoned general commercial, and part of the property, a large part of the property right now is planned public and community use open space and zoned OSM. And so, public and community use open space can be changed or removed. But there was this policy for GG10 put in our comprehensive plan, presumably to protect some of the open space, to make it not just a gimme that you could actually change the zoning. And so it says specifically that you can convert public and community open space lands to a different use if an alternate proposal is accompanied by suitable retention or replacement of open space, developed recreation or other suitable compensating actions. Again, some discretion involved here in this. And it's very discretionary, this policy. And so, it doesn't say you can't do it, and it doesn't say it has to be sort of a like-for-like number of acres. And so, the applicant has worked with this, and their proposal to move the open space and commit to working, I think, through the good neighbor group or certainly with the community to, to plan the park that would be developed on that acre, just over an acre that's left. Will ensure that that park meets the community needs, and so staff finds that that's suitable retention and replacement of the open space. And so all of the Chapter 4 policies are met by this proposal. There are additional ones in the, in the staff report, but these are, this is sort of the big ones. And so, all the Chapter 4 policies are found to be met. Because there is a housing component to this, we also looked at Chapter 6, which are, are housing policies. Again, there's several in there that this, that this proposal directly addresses, including collaborating with partners to provide a continuum of supportive services and programs, which is really essentially why the applicant has asked for this zone change. And also to provide for an increased capacity for multifamily development, which ties directly into statewide planning goal 10, which is housing. And that's a kind of interesting thing to think about because what's happening is that the proposal would actually remove some residential land, its zone high-density residential, and then replace that with about twice as much developable land under the general commercial zone. And there's this really interesting thing in our zoning code right now. The, in general commercial, you can actually develop housing at a higher density than our high-density residential zone. And the applicant is actually proposing to develop housing. And so if you look at between the acres and the amount of housing that could be developed, this proposal from high-density residential to general commercial actually does increase the capacity for multifamily housing development. And the fact that some is actually proposed also really leads us to believe that the development actually might happen, whereas the way that the property sits right now, it's not likely to have much multifamily development on it. And so that's Chapter 6. And so, that was a lot. The rest of the policies are identified in the staff report, like I said, but staff has found that all the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan have been met. And so that first component of the zone change criteria is, is met. The second one is a lot easier. It's only gonna take me one slide. It has to do with a demonstration that any needed public services are available and sufficient for development that might happen under the new zoning designation. That's done through the applicant providing statements of feasibility from the applicable service providers. In this case, it's the sewer provider, water provider, and the surface water management agency. Those have been submitted and signed, and so that criteria is met. And then the next two big ones have to do with the transportation system. The first one is that the transportation system is adequate and will remain adequate with the approval, excuse me, of the proposed zone change, ties directly up to Chapter 5 of our comprehensive plan and also to the transportation planning rule, statewide planning goal 12. And so in this case, the applicant provided a traffic study. And the applicant's traffic study first looked at what potentially would happen if the property, if the five-plus acres of the property are zoned to general commercial with no limits. And so what the study has to do is look at the reasonable worst-case development scenario under The reasonable worst case development scenario under the new zone. Versus reasonable worst case development scenario. And reasonable worst case in terms of traffic generation scenario under the current zone and see what that difference is. And because. Nearly five and a half acres of general commercial really has a lot of development potential. It also has the potential to create a lot of traffic. And the traffic study concluded that. If it was rezoned to general commercial with no trip limitations or no limitations at all, it does have the potential to result in a significant impact on. The transportation system. And so that the applicant proposed in this application. To limit the uses and not limit the uses through a trip cap, which we have seen in the past, but limit the uses. Specifically to identified uses that they are proposing to develop on the property. Including a specific number of dwellings, the residential treatment facility. Up to ten thousand square foot of square feet of medical office. Space and then sort of customarily accessory uses and. And what they what the traffic engineers did is then modeled that specific scenario if we were to limit it to only those uses. And once that was done, the traffic study found that there were adequate facilities to accommodate the proposed changes. With this limitation. And so if we were to limit the uses. To what was modeled in this scenario and what the applicant has proposed, then we can make a finding. That this zone change will not have a significant effect on adequacy of the transportation system. Therefore, it meets this criteria, chapter five and the statewide planning goal twelve. Transportation planning rule. Similarly, the fourth. Criteria in their ZDO has to do with the safety of the transportation system. The traffic study analyzed this as well and concluded that also with these limited uses. That the proposal would not have a significant effect on the safety of the transportation system either. So there's a lot of words here. So staff has found that this proposal does meet all the applicable criteria for the proposed. Comprehensive plan map amendment from. High density residential and public and community use open space to general commercial and PCU. And the concurrent zone change from high density residential and open space management to. General commercial and OSM as conditioned and also as as shown in that map with the configuration and the acreages that are identified. And therefore staff recommends approval of these two files with conditions. Including limiting the uses. To the specific number of dwellings and the and the size of the residential treatment facility. Medical office and clinic space that was proposed by the applicant. And is summarized here and then allowing also just some customarily permitted accessory uses to those. And that was a lot, but I'm done and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So any of the commissioners have any questions for Martha? It looks like Tammy, you've raised your hand. Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner. Murphy. Commissioner Stevens, you're first.
Great. Thank you, Chair Peterson. Just for my own, and I could have looked this up and didn't, general commercial C three. What can you tell me what three means?
Can I phone a friend, Jennifer Hughes? I don't know why it's three.
I don't think it really means anything other than when when they first. When the county's first zoning code was adopted, there were three commercial zones and they were. C one, C two, and C three. And then it was just a higher level of intensity. And over time, the C one went away. We still have C two, but it makes less sense than it used to.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That was my first question. My second was. Is the OSM, open space management. I mean, management, does that mean like a park like that's managed or I just that was an odd word for me? What do you can you tell me what that means? And you only get to phone a friends.
All right, I'll do my best on this one. That is a zoning district. That's the name of the zoning district, open space management. And that is. A district that is put on to. Open space lands that are identified as public and community use. I don't know. There's no requirement for any specific entity or type of entity to manage it. I guess the distinction is it's not open space in the sense of like natural areas. It's not. Open space protected for natural resources. It's public and communities open space. A lot of the uses that are allowed include parks and recreation facilities and things like that.
Okay, that makes great sense. And my last question is, I understand this this application is for a comp plan change and zone change. But you did mention that there will be open space and that there will be. Some requirements to that open space to meet. What the community needs. Will that set of that description and those sets of of rules? Or goals to meet the community? Will that be done during the development application?
So that's a good question. And that may be something that the applicant can address in their presentation. It may, and I I should maybe talk to Jennifer about this between here and the board hearing. It may be that. An additional condition needs to be put on that related to the timing of the park. I hadn't really thought about that until after I had written all of this. Or something, you know, the applicants have committed to work with the community to develop a park. But I'm not one hundred percent sure what that looks like, to be honest.
Thank you very much, Martha.
Commissioner Murphy, your mic's off.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair Peterson. Martha, I have a question about open space management. I I know what it is, but I seem. To me, it seems since we have an increase in density. With this proposal. And we're going to cut our actual square footage of open space managed property. Isn't that a health issue within itself? Isn't open space management? Properties designed for health reasons within an urban area?
So I don't. I don't know that I could say it was specifically designed for health reasons. I mean, certainly there's a health benefit to having open space. With the development of the recovery center campus, there will be. Within that development landscaping and some. I hesitate to use open space, but like some common outdoor areas for. Residents and for people using the services there. And so that will be part of this that development. The the park in this case would be open to the would be more of a public space. I don't I don't know. Yes, I mean, it certainly would help the health of the community. And I think the intent is that. Instead of having a large sort of open field that may or may not be being maintained and is fenced and was intended for school use. And and turning that into a park that really is more. Appropriate and could be more utilized by the community. I mean, I'm not sure how you measure like the health impact or benefit. Or lack thereof. I don't I don't know.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lee.
Alrighty. Martha, did the applicant provide you with any sort of a site plan? And I'm getting to my question is, how did they decide? The split between the commercial and the open space?
I don't know. They were not required to provide a site plan. At this juncture because. I think that they had, they are working on designs. And maybe could tell you how they got to that split. But. When you're doing a zone change and there's not actual development. Proposed, they're not required to provide a site plan.
It seems like the split is dependent on that site layout. The one of the other questions I had was the conditions you're you're putting on the property for the development. Will it adequately adequately prevent a future commercial strip creation? Let's say another owner comes along and buys the property. This particular venture fails and another owner owns the property.
So this condition goes with the property. And so whoever. If if this were to fail and somebody bought the property, they would be limited to the uses that were approved if this zone change is approved. Now, they could come back and ask for a modification of that condition and they could ask for different uses. And they would have to demonstrate, they'd have to provide a traffic study and demonstrate how it met all of the appropriate criteria. But any any future use of the property would be limited by the condition here regardless of ownership.
Good. Last question and comment is about the open space management and it was alluded to a little bit like Tammy. And what I've seen in the past is let's say a subdivision is approved with a park in the middle. That park is then tied with a certain number of lots after certain number of lots are developed, the park has to be built. Could we tie this park being built to some? Percentage of build out of the potential future plan that we're hypothetically discussing tonight? Is that a possibility we could think about?
So yes, I'm not sure what that trigger would be, but we can certainly. Talk about that and think through it.
I think there should be something, otherwise it may not ever get done. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Catmine.
Thank you. I've got one question and one. As I'm reading my notes, it's more of a comment. I'm gonna start with a comment. And this might be more appropriate for the applicant's discussion or for future specific development applications. But in reviewing the record, I would be interested in hearing some more details of the good neighbor work that was done to solicit public support. And as far as my question, kind of picking up on some of the park discussion that other commissioners have mentioned. This more clarifying question, would would the requirement to develop the park or a public space, is that required to be within the? The specific parcels under discussion? Or could that be elsewhere?
So in this case, the proposal is on the parcel in the area that would be. That would retain the open space, the OSM zoning. The reason that it's being retained is to. Meet that criteria for the public and community use open space to provide. I don't have the words right in front of me, but to provide an adequate replacement. There is nothing in that in that specific policy that says they can't provide it somewhere else, but that's not what they're proposing. And we're we can't. Condition it on being proposed somewhere else on somebody else's property. I think that the proposal, the the intent is to provide it on this property and meet this. Criteria of replacing it with something that's. Comparable.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Martha, for all your input here. I want to follow up on something what Commissioner Lee was talking about. What I understand here right now is we're talking about. Zone changes and not. Future development. But we're basing the zone changes on what we think the future development is going to be. Now, once we change the zoning. I don't see how you can put restrictions on what they're going to be using that for as long as they follow what that zoning change is. Am I am I wrong there? I mean, we're basing this on what? The applicant is proposing to do. So we're gonna change the zone. But then that doesn't mean that that applicant has to follow everything that they've. That we think they're gonna do. Am I wrong there?
Well, actually, it does mean that it does mean that they have to. They can only develop the uses that are authorized. And so we have done this in the past. It's not our favorite way to do zone changes because to administer it, it, you know, is. A little more complicated. But it's it's sort of a limited use zone change and we can and have done it in the past. We've done it in the recent past with a trip, a trip cap on a property. And it rather than and identifying specific uses. But in this case. The they're not proposing a trip cap and being allowed to do anything and everything that's allowed in general commercial. They're proposing. That it be limited to these uses, but these uses. Are tied to a certain trip generation that the traffic engineer has modeled and said that, okay, it meets all of the relevant criteria. So moving forward, if there is a condition on this property or any property that says you are only allowed to use it for X, Y, and Z. Uses when a when a property owner comes in to do a development. And go through their design review, we look at. What uses are allowed and make sure that what they're proposing fits into that limitation.
Okay, so what I'm hearing now is that. They're gonna put limitations on this particular area we're zoning or changing the zone. Okay? If that doesn't happen, it's still zoned whatever, whatever we we move it into. And whoever comes in there is going to have the same limitations put on them.
Yes.
Wow. I didn't know we had that many particular zones with limitations.
So I think there's, I mean, maybe two handfuls. Or, you know, a dozen to twenty properties across the county that have this type of a limitation through a zone change. It's not super common, but it's also not unheard of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for? Martha, I I I have a couple of no one else doesn't have any questions. So. I'm a little perplexed about the open spacing too, but I I think I'm gonna. Save my questions for the applicant. But from a historical perspective, who owned this property previously?
Well, it was owned by a school district. I assume it's North Clackamas School District, whoever owned the Clackamas Elementary. And then I believe the Parks District owned the property for a little while, but I don't know if there was anyone in between there.
That was my recollection that it was North Clackamas Park and Rec District. And this was a kind of a. They were struggling with the property and so it was kind of a win win deal. But the that this open space thing is is kind of interesting. So. I think I'll hold off my comments because I have some questions for the applicant about it as well. But the. The 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 thought that comes to mind is they are kind of the natural entity. To take on the open space. And for some reason, I was kind of under the impression that that was still kind of part of the deal. But maybe it's not. I don't know. Commissioner Murphy, see your hands up again.
Thank you, Tom. Martha, record. This is in line with Commissioner Wilson's question. About limitations. Would a nonconforming use application be limited also in the future? Who, I mean, if we have limitations on this lot and it sells to somebody else. Down the road and they want to do something different, isn't there always a? Possibility of nonconformant use app and go through a type three application?
Well. There wouldn't be a nonconforming use on the property if it's developed according to what these limitations are. Nonconforming uses are something that is on the property that was developed legally at the time that is no longer allowed under zoning. And so. This property is not going. this property is not going to, I don't, not to my knowledge, going to retain any of the existing structure when it's developed. Um, and I don't even know that it has a non-conforming use status anymore with the school. The school's not allowed in the, uh, in the high density residential zone. And if a non-conforming use is discontinued for two years or more, then it does not get to resume. Um, and so I don't think, I'm not sure how we would have a non-conforming use on this property because any development that happens is development that would be allowed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's, uh, let's see what's next. Okay, have we received any new correspondence on this matter other than what was included in the meeting packets? No?
I'm sorry, uh, that was to me. Uh, no. Why is it saying you did? Uh, no, I've not received anything else.
Okay, uh, and are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to the application? I don't believe there are. No, okay. Okay, so now the applicant, it's, it's your turn. You, you can now present the proposal. As I mentioned earlier, you have sixty minutes. Um, so I'll turn it over to, uh, whoever wants to start. So Mary, is that you?
It is. Uh, thank you Chair. Uh, so hello everyone. My name is Mary Rumba and I am the Health Housing and Human Services Director for, uh, Clackamas County and I'm joined with a couple of my partners. I'm gonna really start with a, a high level overview of really our intent of the use of this property. And then, uh, I'll turn it then over to Cindy Becker, who's our project manager, and she can speak much more to the conversations we've been having around the good neighbor group, uh, the, the, um, the, the, the space, uh, usage. Um, and sort of all the, the, the work that we've been doing with our community as well as our Board of County Commissioners. So, um, so as, uh, Martha has indicated, uh, the intended use is for the development, uh, at least for part of the property development of a recovery campus. Uh, so as many of you probably know, the Board of County Commissioners back in early twenty twenty-three adopted a recovery oriented of system of care. They really identified the lack of coordinated uh, services and supports for our community for individuals struggling with mental health, substance use and homelessness or houselessness. And really brought some experts together to really talk about what would be the right model for Clackamas. We really haven't invested in a coordinated, uh, access model for, for really decades. And so the recovery oriented system of care, which again is a coordination, a coordinated, um, group of services um, that really are low barrier, that are easy to access for our community was developed and Cindy Becker, uh, was asked as our project manager to start looking for properties, uh, within Clackamas County. So the recovery campus, um, so we've gone through a lot of, um, processes to both identify the property, uh, as was indicated, uh, uh, Health Housing and Human Services, also a county entity did purchase the property from North Clackamas Parks and, uh, Rec, uh, District. And it, as somebody said, it was a win-win for everybody. Um, and, uh, through then, once we had that purchase, we also did what we call a notice of funding opportunity to really seek out providers who would be interested in helping us really see this design out. And we knew from really best practices that we need, uh, as many of the services in one location. Uh, people fall through the cracks if they, um, have to go to, to various places. So our model was truly a continuum. Um, doesn't mean that people start at the beginning and go to the very end. They can enter the continuum at different places. But really the continuum includes what we call withdrawal management. People often refer to that, uh, as detox, um, and that is really a medical intervention for folks who are coming off of substances. Then we have a residential component to the program, outpatient and then, uh, recovery housing or transitional housing. And that is a full continuum, um, and folks are, uh, able to come. It is a voluntary, uh, service. Uh, people, uh, ca- would be coming to the campus because they are ready, uh, to seek support. They also might be brought in by loved ones or other support systems in our community who identify that this person is in need and that they're actually ready to, to receive our services. Um, Fora Health is the provider that we've identified. Uh, so we did have two applicants to the notice of funding opportunity and Fora Health was awarded and, uh, that is who we are currently in, uh, program, um, designed with currently. So that's really the model, um, and it's really again just a part of the component of the six plus acres that we are looking at, uh, a pretty important part. Um, this will serve all of, uh, and really all of Clackamas County. It will serve people who are currently housed, who are unhoused, who are, uh, on, um, private insurance, who are on public insurance called the Oregon Health Plan and who maybe are also uninsured. So the idea is to really create access for folks who are ready to, uh, start their recovery journey. And again, as I said, some people might, might start at the very beginning, which is withdrawal management or detox. Others are a little maybe farther along with their, uh, recovery journey and maybe just need outpatient services, group, individual, family, things like that. So it really is, um, a continuum and really is intended to meet the individual where they're at. So I'd like to turn it to Cindy to give just a little bit more specificity around, again, the design, the open space, things like that.
Hey, thanks, Mary. Um, before I go on, does anybody, uh, have any questions of Mary? Should I just keep going? Okay. So thanks. As Mary said, I am the project manager. I've worked for the county administrator. This is a critical project for the board, um, and so county administration is playing a key role. So it was very clear from the beginning that the board wanted some land. They did not want to just go find a building and, um, provide some services and be done with it. That's what's, that's what's been done in the past and hasn't worked so well. And so the idea was to provide this kind of wraparound services to these people with substance use disorders. And so, uh, we were looking, when we looked at property, um, this property, I think, uh, I think as, um, Commissioner Peterson said, it was owned by Clackamas, uh, North Clackamas School District as part of a a property swap. It was moved into the North Clackamas, um, uh, Parks and Recreation District. And so this part of the district, um, it's, it's, um, not, not high density. And so the, uh, Parks District has also been doing a, a systems review of, of the entire district to look at where they need to invest. This, this particular plot of land, if you will, was not a high priority because of its location, priority to invest in as a park because of its location, because of its access and because of the lack of density. So this wasn't really high on North Clackamas Parks list of doing anything to it. Um, this, the property itself, um, has a school, the school, um, we did, uh, had assessment of the school done. It's got asbestos and lead in it. It's an old school, not surprising. Um, but the property itself, when, um, we looked at it, really the commissioners were, um, very excited about it. And there really wasn't anything else out there of this scope for this, for the, for this price that we could, um, purchase. So it's, uh, because the county is gonna own, owns a property, they did purchase a property. The county will also own the buildings. So it's unlikely that, um, even if something didn't go well with a provider, which we doubt because they've have a huge success in other areas, the county will still own the property, will be still used for this purpose. So, um, that's, it's a long-term commitment in that respect. Um, we, uh, have started on design development and we're really looking at this at two phases. And the first phase will have, as Mary said, that the withdrawal management, residential treatment beds, outpatient services and transitional housing. That will take up about two, two and a half acres of the site. There's still about two acres, about two and a half acres that has not been decided how that will be used. However, I mean, in conversations with the board, it will be an extension of this, whether it's all housing or whether it's a combination of treatment services and housing. That hasn't been decided yet, but it will be some similar array to the first phase. Um, I think the, uh, and there will be two buildings on the, on the first phase site. There will be a clinical services building and, and a transitional housing building. Both of those buildings will have courtyards with them. Um, so there'll be a large courtyard with a clinic service building. Actually, there'll be two courtyards. One for the, um, withdrawal management group and one for the rest of that building. Um, the first building's gonna be about twenty thousand square feet and the second about, I think fourteen thousand. Um, no, 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 I'm sorry, uh, about twenty-five thousand and fourteen thousand. And then the transitional housing building will also have an outdoor area as well. There will be gardens. There'll be looking at, um, uh, outdoor gardens and, and other, uh, amenities, uh, for those sites. Um, the, the open space, I, I will be honest with you, it was, it's an art as much as a science. Um, there's nothing magic about, um, this one point one five acres that we, that we came to this by a formula. We really were looking at the site. We wanted to make sure, it was important to us to have some public space for the neighbors. And so it was really a balancing act to be able to have enough space to provide the services and have some space that the neighbors could really invest in. Um, we started the, um, good neighbor group last year. And the, the ultimate, um, outcome of the good neighbor group is to develop a written good neighbor agreement. This has been done in other communities where, uh, mental health or addiction services have been brought in. And so there's, there's an actual written agreement where the services commit to X, Y, Z and the neighbors commit to X, Y, Z so that they can coexist um, uh, in a positive manner. So, um, we've been meeting with the group. The group includes people who are residents of the neighborhoods, people who have businesses in, in the neighborhood as well as people who are themselves in recovery. And so we've had some good conversations. Um, I can tell you, uh, which you won't be surprised that the neighbors weren't exactly, yeah, we're really excited about having a recovery center here. Um, I, I, you know, I, I don't think there's a lot of neighbors who would be saying that, but we've really worked with them. We've really explained to them, tried to debunk some of the myths and explain to them what this is and what this isn't. Um, we brought them to the, uh, provider's other campus, um, so they could take a look at that. Um, we've also included some of the folks in the design work, meeting with our architects. So we're, we're really trying to be very sensitive to the community and sensitive to the people who are gonna be coming here and the staff. Safety is obviously a big issue. It's a big issue to us too. We wanna make sure that staff are safe, that, um, the consumers who use the service are safe and the neighbors are safe. And so that is also been worked into, into, um, the design development. So we're trying to, um, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a push-pull. We wanna get it done, but we wanna be sensitive to what's happening. And we think that the way that this site, we're looking at designing it, um, makes sense and balances out the many competing needs. So, um, in terms of the, um, open space itself, we've, it's, it's, we've had a conversation with the neighbors about how they would like to be involved in it. And some of them are concerned about a park is gonna, they don't want people parking in front of a park in front of their house. So, um, we'll have more conversations about that. And, you know, not everybody is real excited about a park. Um, so, you know, people have talked about maybe we should do a community garden. And so there's been lots of different conversations about it. Um, it will be done at the end of the project. It's not gonna be something we do at the beginning, but that will also give us time to have conversations, um, with the neighbors, um, and as to what they would like to see and how much they wanna be engaged in it, quite honestly. Um, you know, there, whether or not, um, there needs to be a playground. I gotta tell you, there is a playground on the existing site and it is not in good shape. It is as probably as old as the building. So, um, it's, it, actually having that gone is probably a good thing and it's a good safety piece. So whether or not the neighbors wanna, uh, a children's park area in that open space, I don't know. Um, it's, as I said earlier, it's not, it's not a high density area. And, um, so there are, um, you know, there are scattering families. Um, there are some scattering developments. Um, and so, and it has been an area where there's been some issues around drug use um, uh, on the streets. And one of the things that we've done is we've, uh, fenced off the space earlier than we needed to because there have been a variety of individuals who are homeless, who are making camp on that site, starting fires on that site. And so we're trying to, during this time, and the building is still up, by the way, we haven't demolished the building yet. But because it's vacant, um, people are coming and, um, it's not a great thing for the neighbors. So we have fenced it early. So I'll stop talking and see if folks have questions. Kalina, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Cindy, do you wanna quick, um, explain a little bit about how the neighbor group, the good neighbor group was formed? We didn't just pick the neighbors who were already, you know, good, right?
Right.
You wanna talk a little bit about the makeup of the group and how many times that they've met?
Well, we've met about four, excuse me, four or five times. And we've, um, kind of not speeded up some of the meetings because of this stretch of making decisions about zoning and development. And, um, we, there's a group of folks, um, called We Built, which is Catty Corner from from this, uh, park area. And it's a community of folks with, um, adults with autism and they had some real concerns. So we specifically did outreach to them and invited them to be part, um, of the, um, of the good neighbor group. And then we did outreach to the community, to businesses. We sent postcards, we dropped off postcards and asked people, asked who wanted to be invited. So people actually came and applied and we had more people that applied, if you will, to be in the good neighbor group than we were able to accommodate. But, so we tried to get that mixture of residents, businesses and people in recovery. Thanks, Kalina.
I just thought that was important, that we didn't just select people that were in favor of the project.
Okay. Absolutely.
Good. Want to make sure about perspectives.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Kalina Kunert. Um, I am consultant to the county, um, that prepared the application. So I wanted to just address really quickly a couple of the open space comments. Um, there was a question about whether or not a site plan had been submitted and how we came up with the amount of leftover space. So early on before, uh, before I came on board, we did kind of look at what the program was, the size of the area that was being served, sort of di- uh, informs how much um, uh, square footage of services there might be. And so we did sort of some test fit to try to make sure that we reserved enough space uh, to provide the services that were being planned. While understanding that because of the way that the comprehensive plan is written, we do have to provide something in compensation for the loss of the open space. We knew that the project would include, uh, as Cindy had and Mary had both commented, that there will be courtyards that are for the residents and for those who are receiving treatment. But those wouldn't be available to the general public to compensate for what is lost. Now, what's being lost, as we've discussed, is a playground that's in poor condition. Um, it is fully fenced. It was intended for school use, whether or not people sneak through the fence and play basketball every once in a while. Um, it's really sort of a poor quality open space and doesn't really meet the, um, the intent or that goal of the comprehensive plan to provide a community use, public community use. Um, and so we felt that by moving it from the inside to the outside of the property, that would make it a higher quality use. And by engaging in the community, um, that good neighbor group that's already formed to inform the project, um, we can provide a much better, um, open space that will meet that goal of public and community use rather than being a private, a private open space. So no site plan is being proposed at this time, but you'll get to see it again when that site plan does get approved. But we did work with Fora to make sure that we left enough space for um, that development to can, uh, meet all the needs of that, um, uh, continuum of care that we talked about. I think that everything else was covered. Uh, again, just wanted to iterate that, um, that good neighbor group, um, was a diverse group of people and really had, uh, you know, the goal of it was to make sure that we dispelled any myths about what a recovery center is and isn't. Um, I think a lot of, uh, you know, the people that came into it initially that had concerns, once they found out what the project really was planned to be, um, uh, became supporters, as you can see, because they sent in their letters of support. So. All right, I am available for questions if anyone has questions about how we're meeting.
Okay, I see we have a lot of hands up here. So, uh, obviously commissioners have, have some questions for you all. So let's start out with Commissioner Wilson. Your handle was up first.
Thanks, Tom. I don't know if this is totally germane to what we're talking about here, since we're only talking about supposedly changing the zoning, but part of this seems to be, we wanna change this zone for a specific use, okay? Now, I, I have a question about, uh, how is this going to be funded? Um, for the development and what's the timeline for that funding? You talked about two phases and how long is this gonna take? Uh, who's gonna pay for it? Is this something that's gonna come out of the county budget? Or is there some other entity that's going to fund for this development? Or are we taxpayers gonna be, uh, put on a hook for this? Uh, that's, that's my question about, uh, Uh, that's that's my question about uh how is this thing going to get funded?
So um I'll be honest, I'm I will tell you what I know. Um, I'm not sure how that connects to the zoning, but um the county is committed to funding the construction of of the buildings. Uh, the ongoing operations will be funded. Um, the majority of individuals will be um probably on Medicaid uh and or or um without insurance and they will be funded through the Medicaid services that we have in the state. And so the ongoing operations, um that that's how these um similar services are being funded through the state and what's called the coordinated care organizations. And then there's some additional state funding for people without insurance. But the county is um looking at a variety of different resources and will be braiding them together um to fund this uh fund the construction.
So you already have the funding for this?
We have the funding, we don't have the funding for all of it yet, no. We have the funding, we've purchased the property. Um, we've purchased the design and development and we're in the process of getting the rest of the, collecting the rest of the dollars for the hard cost constructions.
Wha- what is the estimate on the amount of money we're talking about here?
Well, the the total estimate is um looking about forty million dollars for this construction.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you, Tom. A fantastic project, about probably ten years behind, but I think it's fantastic that you have this. Um, but I am sensitive to open space managed property, too. Um, I, it's dear to my heart since I live in a neighborhood that has lost a considerable amount because of the river-moving channel migration has taken it. But anyway, besides that, uh you mentioned public housing. So these is, public housing is being proposed on these lots uh that the actual owner will be Clackamas County?
The um, yes, so it's not, um, it's housing funded with public dollars. There's, there is public housing, um but basically the the this, we're funding transitional housing and yes, the county will own it. And the transitional housing essentially, as people come through the treatment, um rather than than going right back into community and oftentimes not having any support, not being prepared. The purpose of the transitional housing is people would would be there for ninety to hundred eighty days so that um they, when they go back to community, they will have a place to stay, they will have a job and they will have the supports, rather than going from clinical services to just going out and finding their own way. What we're committed to through this campus is really having, there'll be a lot of peers there, people who are in recovery themselves will be working with these individuals to make sure that when they go back to the community, they have the important things that they'll need to succeed.
Excellent. Um, and this, you'll take families in, too, I.
At this point, no, it's for adult men and women.
Okay, I see. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, and I'm I'm looking at the conditions of approval the staff recommend and I'm listening to very carefully to what Cindy uh is proposing and Mary proposing. And I'm not sure I understand how they're linked, so maybe you can help me out. You said that the residential treatment facility is part of phase one and it's going to be twenty thousand square feet.
Um, the residence, the the clinical building, yeah, I have to, I'll have to go look, to be quite honest, I just don't have it on.
Okay, and then the second building you said is the medical office outpatient clinic?
The transitional housing, the first building will be detox and residential treatment and um support services and um administration. And the second building will be transitional housing and outpatient services.
Not the medical office, because it's listed in the condition as medical office and outpatient clinic?
Right.
Is that different than the second, or is that the second building you're talking about, phase two?
Yeah, um, I guess I'm, I wasn't sure that, I guess reading the staff recommendation, that that meant a specific building or you're just saying you can have these uses? And so that's what we're assuming. I don't think it's.
I think we have to be very careful here because these are restrictions on the property, that this is what you could, this is all you can do.
Correct.
You you presented that we would have fourteen thousand square feet of the second building, but it's limited in the conditions of approval to only ten.
So we're limited to ten thousand square feet of medical office and outpatient clinic as the category is defined in the in the code. Um, and so these limitations all have to do with traffic. So some of these are limited by the number of beds because that's how the trips are counted and some of them are limited by square footage. So that building is not ten thousand square feet by itself. It's ten thousand square feet of that particular use. And so that's how it's being, does that make sense?
Sure.
I think, I think that, just so I could clarify, it's thirty thousand square feet, about thirty thousand for the first building and twenty for the second. But I think as Kalina was saying, um, one of the areas that people, I think, maybe the most concerned about that had the potential for the most traffic is outpatient. Because when people are going to detox, they're going there for several days. People are going to residential treatment, they could be going there for a month, so there's not a lot of in and out. And so the the conversation was how do we limit the um uh vehicles going in associated with outpatient specifically? And so that's that part of the campus um was limited to the ten thousand square feet.
Okay, I I think my point is more that without a specific site plan, generating very specific conditions of approval that limit the development of the site and and mixing uh traffic count type uses and with building type uses is getting to be very confusing if we don't figure out a way to various, to simplify this in order to approve what you need in order to develop the site the way you would like to without over limiting or somehow misallocating open space incorrectly. Did I say that right? I think so.
Yes.
That's my concern.
Hey.
Thank you.
Commissioner Loops. There you go.
Yeah, I think um when um Cindy was talking way back at the beginning, um she mentioned that the neighbors around the area had been given information to visit the the uh other facility, she said the other campus, in other words, the same, you know, services being done elsewhere. Where is that?
Um, it's on Cherry Blossom Court in Portland.
Cherry Blossom, in Portland, not at Cherry Blossom and Troutdale, but it's in Portland, right?
Yeah.
Okay, is it going, is that facility about the same size as this one is planned to be?
No, this is a lot, the one we're planning is a lot smaller.
But this new one would be a lot smaller.
Correct.
And how how long has that other one been there?
Uh, Mary, do you know?
Uh, uh, just a couple of years, it's a newer facility over by Adventist Hospital off of two oh five.
Okay, and it, everything there has gone pretty well with the people around it? Or is the zoning a lot different there?
Um, they have different zoning, um so they were, they were able to zone it um uh in a, in a zone class that we don't have. Um, and it's a uh one oh two three oh southeast cherry blossom. They don't have the onsite housing, but they're actually building that now. And so um it's, it's a, I I can't, you know, I can't speak to all the neighbors there, I don't know. Um, but I know that I I think it was on property owned by Adventist Hospital. And um it's a beautiful facility, if you can look it up on the website under Flora, F O R A, Health, H E A L T H, Cherry Blossom. And this um it's, there will be several of the same attributes uh but on much, on a much smaller scale and for the one we're building.
Okay, so it's around a hundred and second and it definitely sounds like that's Molloma County, of course. Okay, and the other question is um in the facility you're planning here in Clackamas County, what would be the um approximate total volume of individuals being uh served there, treated, served at any given time? In other words, because you have some in detox and you have some in um, you know, a longer recovery period and then you have some in outpatient, so it sounds like there's different people there, men and women who are adults, doing different things at the same time. What would be the maximum who would be there at any given time?
Well, in in terms, so there's kind of two groups. You've got your detox, we uh looking at up to sixteen beds for detox, twenty-four beds for residential treatment, thirty-six beds of uh for um transitional housing. And then in the um outpatient services at any given time in a per quarter, so every three months you're looking at maybe two hundred, two hundred fifty people over a three-month period.
So good size, I mean, I mean, I'm thinking from the neighbor's perspective of, you know, new people being there for, you know, three months or however, so, okay. Yeah, that, those are my questions, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Commissioner Satter, your hand keeps coming up and down. I'm assuming it's a technical thing, so I'm gonna let you go before Commissioner Cat, the likes. See it come up repeatedly.
The first time she talked about the adult care center for the autism and my aunt lives in one on Ninety-Sixth Avenue. But it's, but hers is by Johnson Creek, so I was like looking up on the map to make sure I didn't have a conflict. Um, so that's why my hand shot up really quick then.
Okay.
I had, I was worried that I had a conflict, but then I checked everything up myself and I made sure I didn't.
Okay.
And then uh, so is the site review, uh um, you know, we're talking a lot about stuff that would be more with the uh site review plan. Is that something that the county is going to take administrative action on the site review plan? Or is that something that comes back to the planning commission?
Martha, do you want to speak to that or Jennifer? We but we will be going through a design review.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, design review does not come to the planning commission. Design review goes to a design review committee um and then is a ministerial decision.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify. Because I wasn't sure if um if if now was like get those out now questions or if they would be more appropriate, you know, if I had questions. But it sounds like my biggest concern was the neighbors because when I think of an elementary school, I think of a lot of us families around. But it sounds like the work with the community was really thorough. And um so I appreciate all the information we were given on the community response because that was my number one concern with the rezoning.
Okay, thank you, right. Anything else? Okay, all right, Commissioner Catalin.
Uh, thank you. Uh, following up on some of Commissioner Lee's questions, I'm going back to the condition, the proposed conditions of approval and that maximum ten thousand square feet for medical office and outpatient clinics. And I recall during the applicant's presentation hearing a thirty thirty thousand square foot figure. Am I mishearing or is there a conflict between those two?
Uh, thirty thousand square feet included the residential treatment services, so that falls into another category in the code. They're separated this way to align with the code. So um I know Commissioner Lee had a concern about that maybe we were constraining ourselves too much in this. Um, went back and forth with Martha to make sure that what we were proposing, the limitations that we were proposing aligned with how it would be reviewed in the code. So we are comfortable with this. I've also reviewed it with the applicant, um sorry, the the service provider to make sure that um they're not proposing more than this. So you look at things like, um, you know, a maximum of sixteen beds, that's not a random number, right? There are state state regulations that require so many staff per so many beds and so they're always in multiples of eight. So um these numbers were pretty well thought out uh to make sure that they align with the code so that it will be somewhat easy to review. I know um Martha mentioned that it does make it complicated when you put conditions on a, on a rezone, but um we're comfortable with these conditions.
And that, that was my second question was wh- whether or not a conditional use permit with the specific building review, designer view, if that might be more appropriate in terms of not encumbering the land much or excessively.
I'm gonna defer to Martha on this because I know we talked about this at the beginning and we ruled it out after much back and forth.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I totally understand your question, so if I answer it incorrectly, feel free to tell me. Um, a conditionally used permit is a specific type of permit that is required for certain types of uses. The uses that they are proposing are allowed outright. I think all of them, I'd have to look at this. Um, there are most, most if not all of them are allowed outright in the general commercial zone. And so we can't make them go through a conditionally used permit if it's not something that is um already identified as a conditionally used in the zone.
That makes sense, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. Um, I have lots of questions, but I'm not sure they're gonna be uh answered adequately. Uh, to be perfectly honest, I think this would be a little easier, have been easier for us to understand and visualize if you would have proposed, uh given us kind of a timeline. We're gonna do this then approximately what this is gonna be and how this is all coming together. Uh, because I'm kind of with Commissioner Lee, I'm struggling with how we can put conditions when we really don't have a great understanding of how this is all gonna come together. So I, my advice to you would be uh when you propose this to the board, it would be helpful to have, this is the proposed plan. And this is when we uh are hoping we can accomplish this phase, what it'll be, when it might, what the timeline might be. Being a former project manager, I want to know how much it costs and all those kinds of things. Uh, and then, you know, the next phase is this and this is how it's all gonna come together. I think that would make it easier for us and certainly easier for the commissioners to better understand how these conditions will apply to uh what you want to do. Because it's not real clear to me uh as as Commissioner Lee alluded to, how this is gonna work, to be quite honest. So those, those were my thoughts. Uh, Martha, do you have a comment?
May I jump in, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I hear you and I think having, um, I think having an identification of each phase and and the timeline is helpful, but I just want to be clear because I wasn't real clear at the beginning. These conditions are not conditions that I or we or the planning has, we didn't pick these numbers to to condition this on. This is something that the applicant um proposed and Kalina and I had a lot of conversations of, tell me what exactly you want in this campus and what, what do you, what do you need for the campus? How many, how many housing units? How much of this, how much medical office space? Um, and and put that all in here, whether or not it's phase one or two. So we are sure that everything that is conditioned is i- is is gonna be um, is gonna work for you and your development. And so the reason there's conditions on it is because of traffic, potential traffic issues if there's not. But the specific uses that are on here are completely driven by the applicant. I mean, they're and they're modeled by the traffic and and everything like that. But I just wanted to maybe, hopefully that helps the conversation a little bit. This isn't something that like I or Jennifer picked as an appropriate condition um out of.
I wasn't, I wasn't saying, I don't think I was saying that. I think we were just struggling, trying to understand how this all comes together. I get what you were doing, but when listening to the other comments and my own reaction, it was like, would it spin better to have a better overall? This is kind of the vision, this is how we want it to come together. I think it would have helped us a little bit, like uh uh valid and help validate uh where you, where you, where you're coming from. That's all I was trying to say.
Hmm, can I also clarify that the, that the um, the conditions are the outer limits, right? We have to put outer limits on it in order to come to a uh uh non-significant traffic impact, right?
Right.
Um, so the applicant is not guaranteeing that they're going to do all of these things to the maximum, right? This is just conditions that keep us from uh tripping the 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 traffic threshold, right? And so again, we put a buffer on here so that we feel comfortable that everything that will will be constructed in the future can be accommodated within these limits. This isn't the project exactly that we are proposing, right? We're just asking for a rezone, we're not. We're just asking for a rezone. We're not proposing a specific project just yet.
Also, I think, um, you know, we so we have, um, a project schedule. We have designs for the property. Um, for at least for half the property for phase one. Um, we've got it pretty detailed out by building, by floor, by use. Um, and we, you know, we've, we've actually provided that at a county commission meeting. So, um, we're not trying to, um, uh, say that we've been putting a lot of work into this. I think it's a question of we've got things happening at parallel tracks. And so we're trying to do all of these things kind of at the same time, and they may not be in the most logical order. Um, we knew we had a property that needed to be rezoned. Um, cuz because of the two zones that were there now and they weren't going to meet the, we had this property that everybody loved. And it would make the perfect, you know, perfect location for this campus. And so we wanted to get on doing that right away, but we also couldn't wait until all of the zoning work was done to start designing the designing the, um, uh, space. So we've done that. And we know that design review can't happen until after the zoning. So these, all these different pieces are happening. At the same time, we've identified working on various funding sources. So we're doing a lot of things at the same time. Is that ideal? No, but that's how, um, we have to move this project. So
I guess all I was, since you've, since you've briefed the commissioners. All I was saying is it would have been nice if we can have been briefed the same way. That's all I was saying. It would have helped set the context for this. This, uh, application and made it better for us to understand. Had you done the same thing to us that you'd already done with with the county commissioners. That's all I'm saying. Any other questions of the staff? Or sorry, you have another comment or rebuttal? Sorry. Cindy, I see your hands up. Did you wanna? You're on mute.
We're more than happy to show you the designs if you wanna see them now.
Well, I'll leave that up to the rest of the commissioners if they think that would be useful or not. So, Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, looking at what staff recommendation is for the approval with the conditions. You know, I'm with Brian and you, it's pretty confusing. And, you know, once we make, we're only the the first hearing here. Of course, you have another one. You need corrections, uh, but you know, it's pretty important if we're gonna put conditions on this, this limits you to the conditions. So you know, we wanna be accurate. So now's the time to make the change if we have to.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Wilson, you're still on mute.
All right. I've been by this property. It's in total disrepair. It needs to be, uh, developed. And I I appreciate what we're trying to do here and putting in some detox and some stuff like that in there. However, um, I don't think we have a good appreciation for how this is going to be developed. And to be putting in all these limitations on the development of the property seems a bit unreasonable to me. If, in fact, uh, the applicants can fulfill what they're talking about. That would be great for our community and for Oregon and Portland and everybody. However, I don't think we've got enough planning here for this. And that we're basing our change on this application uh, for zoning based upon what they're telling us that they're gonna do. A lot of money has gotta be spent on doing this.
Yeah, so we're kind of getting into discussion, Commissioner Wilson. My, my question would be, they had offered to give the same, uh, overview that they had gave to the commissioner. Would you like to see that? And are there any other commissioners that would like to see that? And then to your point, I think we can talk more about that when we get into our deliberations, if that would be okay. So so right now I'd like to see if there's a interest in, since they've offered uh, an opportunity to to hear what they presented to the commission, if that would be helpful to everyone.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so since you offered, let's, let's see it. Thank you.
Can everybody see this?
Great.
Now I'll put it in slideshow.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, very quickly, just that very, um, general schedule. And, um, working, we're now in, um, design development. And we'll be working on the construction documents, submitting building permits. Um, we would start actually demolition of the existing building and start construction um, in the summer of twenty twenty-six and end construction, I'm sorry, um, in, uh, I'm sorry, uh, twenty twenty-seven. So that's a very high level overview.
Could I clarify? That's the first phase you're saying?
Yes, yes. And I will show you that. Yes. Okay. So this is again, just, um, the existing property. So here's a school that would be demolished. And as I said, it's in pretty bad shape. Um, this is the property itself. Um, and it's, I mean, it's used but not used that much. So we're looking at, and we're working at these, as I get, this is schematic design. And we're currently, um, gonna be shrinking some of the sizes of these buildings, but this is what we're starting. And so again, here's, here's the open space. Um, this is building two, which is the transitional housing and outpatient services. And then building one is the detox and residential treatment and administration. And you can see, and then you'll see courtyard and you'll, I'll show you that later as well. And so these are the numbers that I mentioned to you earlier. This is that future development. This would be the phase two, if you will, of of the property, which again, um, our goal was to have the entire property rezoned rather than doing this twice. So, uh, again, another picture, building one withdrawal management, residential treatment. Really bad at this. I'm sorry. Um, and then here are the courtyards. This is where the teach, the withdrawal management would be and they would have a courtyard here. And then there'd be this larger courtyard here. And then this would, this is the open space right here. This is, um, the undeveloped property over here. So the core principles, um, this is very important, obviously, in the services to this population. So looking at comfort, safety, de-escalation, coherency, nature and empowerment. So these will all be kind of the underlying principles that went into design of the buildings. The amenities in the buildings would be a courtyard. There'll be an art room. There'll be a fitness room. There'll be, I don't know if it'll be a basketball half court, but there'll be some kind of court to bounce some balls off of. Uh, there'll be a space for families to visit. There'll also be family counseling. There'll be group meeting rooms, outdoor patios. And as I mentioned earlier, garden beds. So building one, this is, um, the courtyard, as I mentioned earlier, uh, level one and level two. Um, the residential treatment beds are on the second floor. Um, the, the folks would come in here. There's a, um, kitchen dining room area here. This is where the administration staff would be. Um, and then people would come in entryway here for residential treatment and here for withdrawal management. We're looking at having, um, uh, some kind of cover so people aren't standing out here, uh, waiting to get in to, um, uh, be seen for withdrawal management. And building two, again, on the second floor are where all of the sleeping rooms would be. This is the transitional housing. Um, so we're looking at, you know, two to a room. And then we have on the first floor, this will be the outpatient area, outpatient services. And again, um, kitchen dining area, visiting area. The folks in this building, um, will, uh, most likely be preparing their own food. Where in the other building, it'll be prepared for them. So this is what we're looking at, just in terms of treatment of the exterior. We're looking at, um, two tones, um, and wood siding and then fiber cement siding. This is looking, um, into the, into the, uh, clinical building. And the transitional housing building would be right across the street over here, as you can see here. Uh, and a picture of the courtyard with, um, basketball area. There'll also be spaces. Um, when we brought in some of the folks in recovery, it was really important, um, to see various features, which they gave us great input about. Um, what was important to them in their recovery. So another view of the back, this, again, this is the clinical services building. Uh, back view of the building here. So you, folks would come in here, drive in here. And here is the, um, housing building and the clinical services building. And here's where the withdrawal management would be. Another view, here's where the open space is here. This is a church over here. I think it's Ukrainian church. And that's it.
Thank you.
You bet.
That was very helpful. Commissioner Fowles, you have your hand up.
I'm curious about the timeline with the open ma, open space management. Because you had mentioned that the park would be done at the end of phase two, yet there's no timeline for phase two. So is that just gonna be left undeveloped? So are we losing the current park and gonna have an undeveloped one for an unknown number of years?
No, I'm sorry. I I get confused with my building one and two and phase one and two. And we're, when the fa, phase one, building two would be, when all of that would be done, is what we're looking at. Not, not, um, waiting until the undeveloped areas.
The mid twenty-seven or
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, I have a question for Chris with Kittleson. Did you specifically include this site plan and all the uses that were just presented to us in your analysis?
The uses that we were provided are the ones that are listed in the traffic study. I believe they are a little different from on the site plans. Basically, we were given, as Kleena had indicated, kind of an upper bound to make sure that we were sizing for the ultimate, um, kind of worst case scenario. And sorry, I should back up on Chris Bramer from Kittleson Associates. I'm a licensed professional engineer. Sorry, Brian, did that answer your question or?
I think so. So the uses that we were just showing on that site plan, those uses plus additional uses for future uses included in the traffic count.
That's my understanding. We probably wanna get Kleena to fully verify that because we were basically given the, the assumptions to work with for our traffic analysis. And I can't tell you definitively that they match what you just saw on the screen.
Yeah, the traffic count matches the conditions. So the maximums that are listed in the conditions, it doesn't match the proposal exactly. The proposal does have to come in under the maximums.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you.
And the other questions? I have some comments now. Thank you for the presentation. I'm a visual person, so I really, I really appreciate you were able to do that for us. I think it was very helpful. So, uh, phase two. Uh, help me understand what's envisioned for phase two, again, just to refresh my memory.
So we, we had an initial meeting with the board and, um, it was really brainstorming. Um, there will be services, um, for adults or, um, young adults. And we're not gonna be having, um, services for children on the same site as we have, um, for the, for the adult, men and women. And the question becomes, how much of each? Um, for example, should it be all housing? Should it be, um, a combination of clinic? And and should it be replica of what's in phase one? Those kinds of things, um, we're, we're just kind of brainstorming, but it will be some variation of those. Which is why when we did the application, we wanted to take into account, okay, what's the most of each that we could have? Um, we wouldn't, for example, replicate, um, uh, withdrawal management. The sixteen bed withdrawal management would serve the entire property. Uh, and so we're not going to increase outpatient, uh, services that would serve the property as well. So it's really a question of, um, additional residential treatment beds, which we also, um, factored into that. And would be also additional, um, dwellings. So it's really gonna be that combination that we are, uh, will be looking at. And again, to serve this population.
Yeah. Okay, so just, uh, just for clarification then, so the the way it meets the, uh, increases the um, multifamily or housing needs is through the residential facilities. It's not creating housing for anybody. Is that, uh, is that correct? Is that how I understand it?
When you say, I'm sorry, when you say housing for
Well, I mean, there's a big push for housing in general. And if I understood correctly, one, when we were evaluating the criteria, one of the things we're saying that actually, even though it's a, this zone change wouldn't imply, we're actually gonna create more housing. But it sounds like it's only specific housing for a specific type of need. It's not gonna provide general housing needs on the site. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
We'd be looking at providing what's called recovery housing.
Okay.
Um, and so, I mean, the, the only question for me in the conditions, um, if we recovery housing is, is for both people with substance use disorder and people with mental health issues. Uh, sometimes they're co-occurring, sometimes they're not. And so, um, it would, it would, um, be for those populations. So I don't know on, on the conditions, if the specific restriction on the substance use is required, uh, or it can be for, you know, a larger um, substance use disorder and mental health or just, you know. Um, our interest is in substance use. And I, I think we can make it work, um, for the whole population, but this isn't intended to be, um, a catch-all for everything. I can, and I can tell you in conversations that Mary and I have had with various people and say, what about this? What about this? What about this? And we've really tried to focus that we don't have any place in the county that, um, is doing this type of work. And if we start adding all sorts of things, then it's not gonna be what it was intended to be. And so if we just increase the size, that's fine. But if we start adding, you know, this ball and that ball and that ball, it's gonna dilute the whole purpose of why we're doing this. And so we've really been clear about that with everyone. So yes, we'd be looking at recovery and listening.
And I have one more question. I see that our commissioners have some, but since I got the floor, I'm gonna take advantage of it. So, uh, the, is the intent then that phase two would also be funded and owned by the county?
Yes, that can, uh, that at this point, the construction, the operations will be through their insurance, whether it's Medicare or other.
It would still be, it would be another county building at the end when we're done.
At this point, yes. Yes, we haven't heard anything else to the contrary.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Thank you. Commissioner Satter.
So I just wanted to be um, so if there were any substantial changes that they don't anticipate before the phase two, then that would that take phase two and make it not meet the criteria that we established with the zone change. Then that would become then, uh, a point for that, the, um, sorry, the development review at that point, right? So
If I understand your question correctly, are you asking if we change our mind, right? And phase two becomes something, phase two becomes something different, needs to be something different than what we have anticipated. That would be another chance for it to get re-approved. And the answer would be yes, as if phase two became something that wasn't.
An issue with the parameters. That, it would be an issue at that.
If phase two, uh, we decided instead of a hundred and Correct. If phase two, we decided instead of one hundred and fifty units, which is the max that we've got in here, that we needed two hundred and fifty units, we'd have to submit for a planning modification, a zoning modification. We couldn't do anything that came in over the limits that have been conditioned here.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Cantonwine.
Commissioner Peterson, when you were discussing housing, it made me think of a couple of questions for the applicant. The housing that's depicted on, on the, on the site plan that you shared, what condition is that falling under, under the staff recommendation?
Under dwellings, it's transitional housing, single room occupancy units, maximum eighty beds. In addition to the other one hundred and fifty units.
All right, that makes more questions for you, but I'm going to reserve those for later. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, great. Good discussion. Thanks for bearing with us through this. So next, are there any representatives of the community planning organization or hamlets here to speak? No? Okay.
There's, Tom, there's no one in the audience at all, so you can just.
So I can skip these next statements?
Skip past all of this, correct.
Okay, so we don't have anyone in favor or against it or neutral, we can just jump to the rebuttal. Does the applicant have rebuttal? I think you've had a chance to answer a question, but it looks like you have one more comment, so. Oh, change your mind, Cindy?
No, that, I just wanted to say that one of the comments you received from Mike, he was the head of the Clackamas CPO that dissolved. But when we started the Good Neighbor Group, he was the head of it and they dissolved kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
All right, thanks for clarifying that. All right. The staff, which didn't provide any sort of rebuttal for the conversation, or have we already integrated that into the discussion?
Um, no, I, I think it's been integrated and I think that, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
And I don't, it doesn't sound like we have any people that want to offer, offer any additional evidence, other than I guess would we add the slideshow that we just saw? Would that be part of the record now then too, or, okay? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And before we get into rebuttal, I thought if anyone needs to take a quick break, now would be a good time to do that. So if anyone wants a break, how much time you need? Five minutes? Okay, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll get into the commission discussion at that time. Thank you. Well, it's, hopefully the rest will join us shortly. So are there any further questions for staff from the planning commission? Anyone have one more question for Martha? Or, no, everyone's good? It's kind of an interesting dilemma because it's, there's planning commission staff and then there's other county staff that are here, so they're both staff kind of in a way. Okay, so then I'm going to open it up for discussion. So any of the commissioners, I know Commissioner Wilson, you had started to share your thoughts, so maybe you want to give you a chance to continue where you were going with that. So I see your hands up first, so your turn, you're up.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Like I said, I've been by this property. It's in total disrepair. And it's, it's a, it's an eyesore on the, on the local residents there. And something needs to be done. What I'm concerned about here, though, is that we're rezoning this, we're trying to rezone this as, with, with a lot of limitations on it. My thoughts on this would be that we, we go ahead and approve the rezoning without these limitations on it because the property does need to be improved. Now, if the county wants to limit it as to this type of a facility, that's, that's okay with me. But I don't think we as a planning commission should be limiting property that could be used for a variety of other things. Coupled with the fact that the funding for this property is still kind of crazy for me. It seems like they're relying on a lot of input from the county. And I'm not so sure that we're going to have that funding capability for this. I like the idea of having a retox facility and that capability to work with the citizens that have those type of problems. But if we make this limited in our rezoning for this property, we are looking at a situation where we're not going to improve that property because some, you know, this, this funding may not come through. And so we're going to have that property rezone for a limited type of use. And we could later look at how the application for development of that property would come through and we could then look at how we could make that work. My main concern here, like I said, is we've got a lot of, of if and what happens coming up here, and I don't think we want that to be for this property. The, the, if you've ever been by that property, it is in total disrepair. And it's a piece of useless ground for me to look at. So that's my comments. And what I would like to do, and when we get into the development, uh, processing of this application, I would like to see an amendment put in that would say we're going to take away the restrictions on how this property can develop and just rezone it like the planning committee, like the, 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 the planning department has, has, has talked about. Make it available for anybody that wants to buy it. And then we can look at the county, the commissioners there to put those restrictions on it if that's what they want to do. But right now, I think the best thing we could do is just pass it on like that with an amendment saying no restrictions. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Commissioner Stevens, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Are we just chomping or are we in deliberation?
Yeah, I thought I'd let everyone have a chance to kind of get their concerns out. And then maybe after that, if there's someone who wants to make a motion based on the, the, what, what they hear from the other commissioners, we if, if anyone else wants to talk, then we will, we can move to a motion. So just kind of see how it plays out.
I'll go ahead then with my deliberation. I'm, I'm in support of this zone and comp plan change. I, I am also actually in favor of the limits because there's a lot of residential in the area. And, and I think if I was living in the area, I would want a very serious concern about things such as traffic. So the limitations that have been recommended, I am in support of. I believe that these services are sorely needed in Clackamas County. I think this is an excellent use of this property. And I do want to extend a thank you for having the Clackamas CPO being inactive. I did in my reading see that Sunnyside, what, there was a reach out to Sunnyside as well as the prior chair of the Clackamas. And being in a rural area, that is so important to me as a planning commissioner that the unincorporated areas have an opportunity to provide input. So I want to extend that appreciation. And that's it. That's what I think about this application. And of course, a job well done.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. These are my thoughts and they're just my thoughts. And I firmly believe that there's a need for this facility in the county. I have friends and family that have suffered from addiction and I know what it's like to have to go through some of that. So I think I am in general support for a facility like this. We need to treat people as human beings and value their worth. And this really helps shine the light on that, that these people need our help. And, and I'm all for trying to help them get there. So that being said, the negatives are when I saw the site plan that was presented, I didn't feel like there was really a justification of how the open space and the developed space was determined. I also didn't see that we were adequately presented how they compensated for the loss of the large open space that's there now. There also wasn't a trigger for any sort of open space development. And all of the limitations appear to be traffic count related based conditions. So I'm, I'm struggling with how that all goes together and is linked together. And so a suggestion on how we might be able to get there would be to add a couple of conditions. One would be a trigger for the open space development. And another would be a redo of the traffic report for phase two showing the uses that have been built for phase one, what's left over for phase two. And that whatever they're proposing stills within that traffic limit, it doesn't trip what's called level of service or how an intersection performs. There's all these trips, I'm sure. Chris, if he's still here, I'm not sure he is, yeah, he is. He could explain in detail if there's any questions about that, but we could, we could limit the phase two development at another point in time to, it sure seems like to me the, the main goal is to not trip any sort of intersection improvements or major traffic improvements within the area. And if that's the goal, then, then maybe we should reevaluate it at phase two. That's my piece.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And the other commissioners have some thoughts or suggestions or concerns? Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that the chair of the Hoodland CPO was watching this for the first few minutes that we were when we opened. And she had sent a message that she was sending a comment in. I don't know if you received it or not.
Oh, I, I didn't notice that. How'd you see it? And I didn't.
I think she sent it to the planning commissioner or something. I'm not sure what path she went. She had to go to a meeting. So anyway, I'm sure she was in support of this, but I'm definitely in support of this. But I agree with Brian. It's pretty confusing when we have the traffic report limiting what we can do with this property. The open space managed property is very serious. I, in my, my book, and I think we need to pay attention to what we're doing and not limit this group from what they, what their purpose is down the road. You know, of course, there's one more hearing. They can review this one and see if there's a a, a change they can make to present to the Board of County Commissioners. But so far, I'm, yeah, one hundred percent for this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you said you hundred percent support it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other? Commissioner Cantonwine, you said?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to share, I do support this. I think some of my comments and questions may have indicated that, that there are some things left to be decided or to be determined, rather. But overall, this is needed. I, I support this. I'm, I'm going back to some Commissioner Wilson's comments about the, the conditioning of the approval. And that's, that's where I'm getting hung up a little bit. But overall, I support those and just wanted to communicate that.
Any other, any other commissioners that want to share a certain thought? I'll, I'll make a few comments, just. I, I fundamentally support what they want to do, what's being proposed. And, but it's, it's still a little squishy. On the other hand, it's a county project. So the, the commissioners, I think, are a hundred percent behind this. And this is, reminds me a little bit about the veterans facility that was developed in, down in the Clackamas Industrial Park, whereas China City has already been made. And, you know, even though it may not have been the ideal location, they're going to do it regardless of what we thought. Because it needed to be done. This feels a little bit like that. Not that I'm opposed to it's being done, but it's, it feels a little bit like, well, trust us, I think we got enough to make, and I think these conditions will maybe, maybe address the concerns of the neighborhood. But it's, it doesn't feel real good. This seems, still feels, still, still feels a little squishy. But on the other hand, I don't really have a good alternative as to how we might approach this. So I'm kind of on the, it's like, well, I, I think it needs more work, but on the other hand, maybe that's the best we can get right now. I like the idea of revisiting it as it gets developed, maybe another opportunity for us, if nothing else, just to kind of comment on how it's, it's coming together and, and any conditions that I think might be, might be useful for, for us, even though technically we wouldn't, wouldn't need to come before us again. So I'm, I'm, I'm for it, but I, I, I'm not real enthusiastic about how it's, that, that it's thought out enough where I feel really comfortable with all the recommendations. So that's kind of where I'm at. Someone else raised their hand. Who was it? No? Change your mind? Okay, anyone else has any other comments? Is there anyone who would like to entertain a motion?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning department to approve Z zero one six nine dash twenty five and Z zero one seven oh dash twenty five as written or as presented.
I'll second.
Who seconded that?
Commissioner Cantonwine.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded. So any other comments? Everyone's okay? Well, yes, I'll call for vote. I think we need to do this by, Darcy, don't you administer the vote, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so, oh, hold it. Commissioner Wilson, you have a question or comment?
I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
I move to amend the motion to reduce all restrictions on the application for approval. Removing all restrictions related to who and what they have to do on that property.
Okay, I need a little help with.
I'm not willing, I'm not willing to amend the motion. So if the motion fails, then maybe Commissioner Wilson would like to make a new motion.
It's kind of what I was thinking, since it's already been seconded.
Right, right.
Okay, so you're, you're okay with that then? I think that's the protocol we're going to have to follow. Okay. Okay, so with that, Darcy, could you do a roll call? Or a vote, I should say?
Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopes?
Yes.
Commissioner Satter?
Yes.
Commissioner Founds?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner Cantonwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'm going to go no also. But the motion still carries.
The motion carries.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, I guess that concludes that. Uh, I guess that concludes that, um. So the public hearing is now closed. Uh, when will, when will they, uh, it's on the calendar, right, for the BCC? So, uh, if there's any, any folks, uh, I, oh, I will, uh, uh, make a point to be part of the, the presentation, so if they want to ask questions, why there were three of us that had, uh, were no votes, we can comment on that. As well as all of the rest of you that support it, uh, but if there's anyone who would like to join me, just let me know, uh, so make sure I've uh, accurately, um, characterized the discussion.
I'll try and join you, Tom.
Pardon me?
I'll try and join you.
Okay. Uh, not that we want to, that the noes are, kind of try to over, influence the commission. I will be fair. It, it's fair. Uh, okay, next on the agenda, is there any other new, any other business we need? I've lost my agenda. What did I do with it? Any other business that needs to be discussed?
Uh, there's the schedule review that was set.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to try to do that off the top of my head. Um, so I think you all hopefully saw Darcy's email that the, there was a scheduling conflict, uh, with the board, so we pushed the BCC Planning Commission dinner out by two weeks, so it's gonna be October twenty seventh, still five thirty, still at the Development Services Building. And then we will do the study session that we would have done on the thirteenth, we'll do on the twenty seventh. Um, and that'll be just with the planning commission. I mean, potentially, some board members might hang out, but it's, um, maybe not, but they'll be coming for the, for the dinner at least. And we're planning to do the study session. I think we're gonna pull something together. The state's been doing an awful lot with land use lately. Um, and so I think we'll just do, there's several different things we can update you on, and some of that will end up eventually coming to you in the form of uh, code amendments over a period of time. So I think, um, it will be a good discussion and really kind of, they've been dealing with a lot of different topics, so there's some variety, some housing stuff, some things related to cultural areas. Um, some farm and forest rulemaking, so kind of a variety of things. And so, uh, Karen and I have been talking, uh, Bierig and I have been talking about that, and I think we'll have Martha and probably Joy Fields as well, kind of to talk about some of the changes that have been, that have been happening. So that's the plan for that night. And then originally, that was going to be the next study session on ZDO two ninety, which is the Clear and Objective Standards Project that you had the study session on with Joy earlier this month. Um, we've delayed that just a little bit. Um, there was just quite a bit of material that the consultant produced, and we wanted to spend a little more time uh, providing them with comments back, so that study session is now gonna be on the tenth of November. And they actually, the consultants will be there as well as staff. Um, so that will be back on Zoom again on the tenth. And then November twenty fourth, it says tentative, I think, on your schedule, but Martha did get confirmation from the applicant that that night works for them, so we will be having a public hearing on a comp plan amendment and zone change. Uh, this is, is it Willamette View or Rose?
Rosevilla.
Rosevilla. Yeah, I can never remember which, you know, they all, they're, they're both very active in that area, so I forget. So Rosevilla has an application, uh, to change the comp plan and zoning on a piece of property in the Oak Grove area associated with that facility that they have there, the, um, Congregate Care Facility. So that will be happening on the twenty fourth, and then the first meeting in December, we will do the second part of the Clear and Objective Standards, um, study session work with the consultant. So I think we're gonna keep you busy, other than the thirteen is canceled, October thirteenth is canceled. And it's probably pretty unlikely that we'll have a meeting on December twenty second, but I haven't actually officially canceled it yet, but that's pretty unlikely. Uh, a lot of, you know, a lot of us are on leave at that time, and you've all got things going on and whatnot, so most likely, um, the last one of the year will be that first meeting in December.
So three in a row. When was the last time we did that?
That's, I know. It's true. It is true.
I'm starting to feel important again.
I know, all of a sudden, there's a lot of stuff going on. And Martha's got at least, Martha, you've got one or two other applications that are kind of in the hopper. There's at least the one with the stream, right?
Well, that's in pre-app.
That's just a pre-app, okay.
There's, uh, there's about four different things percolating. Um, none are complete applications. And only one is even an incomplete applica, application at this point.
Yeah, so it's kind of interesting. Been pretty, we've had pretty active, active on both the sort of county project code amendment side and on applicants who are interested in making some changes, so. We might just carry it right into twenty twenty six and keep you guys.
Yeah, why? Great.
Okay, but in the meantime, no meeting on October thirteenth. So we will see you on the, hopefully everybody can make it five thirty on the twenty seventh.
So I, I didn't hear, did, are, are we expecting all of the, uh, commissioners to attend?
As far as I know at this point, but experience will, you know, has told me with these dinners that it's more likely that we end up with maybe three of them. Um, but at the moment, I haven't heard that anybody is a no, so.
Okay, great. I'm looking forward to that. And I'm also looking forward to meeting with all of you in person again. I, I miss.
And I warned you all, there's no like white linen tablecloths and the like. It's like pizza or sandwiches. Maybe something that looks like a salad or a veggie, you know, don't, don't come expecting highbrow, but we will feed you.
Uh, Jennifer, I, I, I would like to extend a compliment to, uh, Darcy. She's been done great work in keeping us informed. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much, Darcy.
Yay, Darcy.
Yeah, yay, Darcy.
I'll second.
Yeah, what speech you'd like to make? Kind of fit the rest of us, no?
Nope, so I'm staying on mute.
Not a speech person. Uh, any other, anything, uh, for the good of the order? No?
All good.
We're all good? Well, great. Thanks, everyone, for all your, your comments and kind of it's a, a, a longer one. We haven't had one this long in a while, but, uh, but it, nonetheless, an interesting and complicated program. Um, let's, that hopes, let's hope that it all comes together, because I think it'll be a good thing in the future, so. Having said that, I guess we're gonna adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you all in a few weeks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.